Great. Well, welcome, everybody. Welcome to the California Environmental Literacy Initiative's District Innovation Hub 2024 webinar series. We're thrilled to have you join us for our first webinar of the year as we explore the topic of school board leadership for sustainability and environmental literacy. Next slide.
If you want to.
Tim, next slide, if you could.
One second, Nate. It's just like that. It stopped. Hold on. There we go.
Great. So my name is Nate Ivy. I'm an instructional coach in the Fremont Unified School District, and I serve as the co-chair for the California Environmental Literacy Initiative's District Innovation Hub. I'll be our emcee and moderator today. I'm joined in the background by Amy Frame from Ten Strands, who will be sharing links and resources in the chat. Tim Baird, my co-chair for the District Innovation Hub from the Green Schools National Network, is going to be helping drive the slides. And a number of presenters and members from our hub. Next slide, Tim. So you've heard a little bit about me and a little bit about who we are. We'd love to learn a little bit about you in a way that helps us build our school environmental leadership community. So we'd love for you to take a moment and add yourself to our map. Amy's going to share a link in the chat to this padlet tool. So open that link to the padlet Amy's sharing in the chat. And then, once that's open, you can click on the magenta colored plus button in the lower right-hand corner of the screen to add yourself to the map. If you can include your name, your school or organization, and maybe a little bit about your interest in this work or a link to your organization. There are a number of tools in that padlet to share who you are. You know, after you've done that or while you're doing that, you can also take a look at who else has joined this webinar series in the past. You can see that we've had good attendance and representation from around the state of California. California is a huge, diverse, amazing state, and we would love to see participation, engagement, and success from every corner of the state. So while you get that open and while you share a little bit about yourself in the padlet, I'll share a little bit about the California Environmental Literacy Initiative. So, Tim, if you could move on to the next slide. So I'll share a little bit about the California Environmental Literacy Initiative or CALI. So if you hear us talking about CALI, that's the California Environmental Literacy Initiative. CALI's purpose is to help guarantee access to high-quality environmental education for all of California's nearly six million students. As noted in the 2015 California Blueprint for Environmental Literacy, California has many pockets of excellence in environmental literacy, but still has work to do to ensure that every student has access to these important opportunities. That's represented by that graphic on the left. We're trying to move from a system where some kids have these amazing opportunities to every student having access. To help achieve the goal of environmental literacy for all, CALI is organized into innovation hubs to drive systemic change in California. You can see some of our innovation hubs listed here, and this webinar is brought to you by the District Innovation Hub. Next slide, Tim. So CALI and the District Innovation Hub believe in taking a systems approach to affecting change, and there are a variety of strong models for systemic advancement in environmental sustainability and environmental literacy at schools. These include the three pillars of environmental sustainability, health and wellness, and environmental education from the Green Ribbon Schools Program, the four Cs model of campus curriculum, community, and culture, and the Green School National Networks Model of Leadership, Climate and Culture, Facilities and Operations, and Curriculum and Instruction. We, you know, in CALI and especially in the District Innovation Hub, we view California's 1,000 public school districts as essential units of change. And we offer this webinar series to help move things forward. Specifically, our innovation hub aims to achieve these goals. We want to build a community. We want to share environmental literacy and sustainability resources. We want to build capacity for change. We want to showcase leading-edge exemplars and deliver the best green district support strategies. We hope this webinar session and the ones that follow this spring help us to achieve these goals. Next slide. So today, we are super excited to offer a robust and pretty ambitious session to take a look at the role of grassroots and treetop leadership in districts with a focus on the importance of clear leadership from the top. Today's webinar is divided into three sections. First, we'll hear from acting board members from three different school districts to hear their perspectives, their motivations, their successes, and challenges regarding environmental sustainability and environmental literacy. Next, we'll dive into two toolkits that can support board members in enacting proactive environmental change and also accessing federal funding for green infrastructure. And then finally, we'll hear from an array of community members sharing their stories and lessons learned about advocacy and how to work with school board members to create lasting change. Throughout today's webinar, we invite you to add your questions to the chat where panelists and fellow audience members can engage with each other in conversation and share resources. We hope to have time for questions and answers at the end of the hour, and then we invite everyone to stay for small group conversations and interaction in that kind of roughly five to 5:30 time period. We hope to have the meat of the presentations in the four to five o'clock time slot. I'd really like to thank our eight presenters and panelists for joining us today, and I appreciate each of you in the audience for your interest in this work. So to kick us off, we are joined by Abel Maestas, trustee and vice president of the Modesto City School District, Ruby Romero Maya, a student trustee for the Pahro Valley School District, and Seaberry Nakbar, trustee and board clerk for the Carmel Unified School District. Trustee Nakbar is also a member of the CALI District Innovation Hub and was one of the key organizers of today's session. In preparation for today's webinar, we asked the trustees to consider the following questions. Why is environmental literacy and sustainability important to you, your district, your schools, your students, and your community? How has your district moved environmental literacy and sustainability forward? And what advice do you have for school board trustees and advocates in California for successful environmental leadership? So first, I'd like to welcome trustee Maestas. Trustee Maestas, why is sustainability and environmental literacy important to you? And can you share some examples of what your board has done in recent years in Modesto to advance sustainability and environmental literacy?
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much for having me here, too. So just, you know, why is it so important to me? I grew up, my grandmother worked in the grape fields her whole life, and my family was integral part of the farm labor movement in the 60s and 70s, and I grew up with agriculture in my family, right? And so to, for me, sustainability is about keeping those pieces that are so important to our generations, especially when we live here in the Central Valley. Agriculture is very important. The food sustains life for all of us, and in order for that to happen, we need to be stewards of, good stewards of our community, of our earth, and be able to sustain our land, our water, and our resources that we have. So it's so important to me, not only as my history with the valley, but also looking towards the future. When I think about why it's important to our district, our school, our community, as a board member, we need to make sure that we are leading by example, right? And so some of the things that we've done in our district in terms of sustainability, when I, when I first got on the board, I really, you know, this was a really important piece for me because I looked around and we hadn't made much movement in our area. We didn't have any solar panels. We didn't have anything that I thought we really need to, in order for our kids to see and to start learning more about sustainability and the environmental impact that, that we, you know, the environmental literacy that we have to have, it needs to be embedded within our structure and within the things that we do all the time. So we really got moving right away with our initiatives. And one of those pieces, and I'll get to talking about, you know, advice for others, one of those pieces is by making sure you have the right people in, in your, in your district to do the right work. So we were able to get Gilbert, who's on this, and he's done so much work to help us get there. So one of the biggest things that we did was we started by having the single biggest purchase of electric school buses from Bluebird, who's the, who, who make these buses for us. So we, we turned over about half of our fleet, and we have 30 electric buses with solar that are, if you see in the picture up on the, up in the right-left corner there. The buses in the charging stations, we built charging stations with solar, with a solar port so that they get charged with the solar. And, you know, obviously, there's some electric grid there, too, but we have taken and moved our diesel out of that impact, and that is so great for our kids, for the air, for the community, for the noise. The other things we've done, we've taken our, we've created solar outdoor learning environments. So we basically taken the classroom and moved it outside, and we've created the, the rooftop is solar. The, there's all kinds of activities for kids to be able to do and learn about sustainability within an outdoor learning environment. We're working on currently getting all of our high schools to have solar carports. We have, I believe, one, two, three that are completed or three or four that are near complete, and we're going to get the rest within the next few years. So we have done a lot of work in, in investing in our initiative, our sustainability initiatives. And that all comes from looking at those three pillars that you talked about. The three pillars are reducing environmental impact, improving the health and wellness of our students, and then having effective education, environmental and sustainability education for our kids. So, you know, I talked a little bit about what we do, what we did, and why it was so important for, for me as a board member to bring this initiative forward.
Great. Thank you so much. I think you got some photos on the next slide as well, so.
Yes.
Maybe you want to say a little bit about some of the motivations and, you know, why this, you know, why as a trustee, you've been able to find success with your fellow trustees in your community? You know, I think there's perceptions that Central Valley can often be a little bit more conservative, or, you know, sometimes, you know, might face challenges in moving initiatives forward like this. So like, can you talk a little bit about how you found success here?
Yeah, and so one of the things, you know, when we talk about the valley being a little more conservative, right? It, I think we can all be on the same page that we do want our water to, to be here. We need our agriculture, and in order to do that, we need some way of sustaining that. And on, on this, you know, initially, also with that, we have to have some sort of economical sustainability as well. It has to, it has to allow us at some point to be economically, economically sustainable. And we had lots of grant funding. There's so much grant funding available out there that it allowed us to do a lot of this stuff without taking a hit in, in our, in our own budgets. So I know you're going to get to that later, but I think one of those, you know, advice I can give to other board members is, is, you know, really don't, don't like, don't focus on extremes. Like, oh, we're not going to be able to afford all of this because there's so much out there that we can be doing to, with money that is available for us. And, you know, it goes to those next two things, social and environmental. We have to take the initiative to teach our kids how to do this because it's going to be so important for future generations. I think a lot of times we see things as being very proactive, like reactive. But, but as a board member, we have to look at not only what's in front of us, but what's going to be ahead of us in five, 10, 20 years. Schools remain for a long time, and so we need to be able to think about the generations ahead, not just one generation, but multi-generations, and how we can sustain and teach our kids that being good stewards of the environment is good for everyone.
Trustee Maestas, thank you so much for, for sharing your perspectives and congratulations on the success you've found so far in these efforts and, you know, shining the path forward for others. And I just really look forward to seeing what you guys come up with next. It's truly an inspiration. Audience, if you have questions or comments for trustee Maestas, please do throw those in the chat. I know he's planning on sticking around for a few minutes and might be able to respond in the chat if you had a thought you'd like to share with him. So let's go to the next slide, Tim. And next, I'd like to pass the mic to Ruby Romero Maya. Ruby is the student board member for the Pahro Valley Unified School District. And boards throughout California include student representatives, and their leadership is an incredibly important asset for creating districts that best meet the needs of students. Welcome, trustee Romero Maya. Can you tell us a little bit about your hometown of Watsonville, California, and the Pahro Valley Unified School District?
Um, yes. Thank you for inviting me once again. Um, so really quickly, our district is. Oh, sorry. Our district is located in a very agriculture-rich area. And so we have some amazing wetlands surrounding us, and we have some rich crops out here. And we have a couple partnerships in our district that support students with educational opportunities. We have, I'm sorry, I'm like, should I list them right now or?
Yeah, feel free, feel free to share that. And I know that you're also planning on kind of overlapping with that with why environmental literacy is important, too. But yeah, tell us about some of the partnerships in your community, and then in a moment, we'll move to the next slide, and, and you can tell the story of your journey through some of these partnerships. But yeah, tell us about some of the partnerships that are important in your community.
Okay, cool. So some of the partnerships include Watsonville Wetlands Watch, which they are doing amazing things in our district, hosting after-school summer classes, some wetlands programs. So I know we have internships available to high school students, and the programs are offered to elementary and middle school students. We also have partnerships like Life Lab and Food What, Business for Life. These are programs that primarily focus on nutrition and student well-being. Along, and so something that also falls within this range are our partnerships with organic farms in the community and farms in our community. So we, they provide food and also information about our agricultural-rich area.
Great. Thanks so much for giving a window into the community of Watsonville and the district that you learn in and that you serve as a trustee. You know, I'd like you to, Tim, maybe we can move to the next slide. I had a chance to talk to trustee Romero Maya in preparation for this, and I was just amazed by the array of environmental learning opportunities that she encountered as a student and how they contributed to her leadership, her development, her goals, her plans for her future, her capacity to serve as a trustee. And trustee Romero Maya, I'm hoping you can just tell us a little bit about your own educational journey through the Pahro Valley Unified School District. You know, where did you see some pockets of sunshine? Where did you encounter some, some maybe dark and lonely days on this journey? And how did they prepare you for the work you're, you're doing now and the work that you hope to do in the future?
Um, so my journey started off at Calabasas Elementary School, starting a green team when I was in fourth grade. If you can see the top-left picture, that was our first group. It was a mix of fourth and fifth and sixth graders. But it was students, we were students that were just mad about stuff we saw on campus. Something that was so small, like some spork packets that were packets with like a spoon slash fork and straws and a napkin that were littered across campus. So we surveyed students, we did our research, we did trash audits, and figured out why students were taking the whole packet. Long story short, they just needed a napkin. So from there, that's where our journey starts off, and this was a crucial moment for me because it was my, I like to call it like my empowerment. This is where I was beginning to feel empowered because I was making, I was starting to see meaningful change, not only in my community, but somewhere where I could directly see the impact of our work, which was on campus. Seeing the dispensers in our cafeteria and seeing less litter on campus, that was really like so cool to see. And so from there, like our projects, we were partnering with the Ocean Plastic Pollution Summit, which is a program offered by the Monterey Bay Aquarium, which I recently learned that they have restarted it. So that is amazing. From there, I was connected to the teen programs at the Monterey Bay Aquarium. And from there, it was programs like Young Woman in Science and Students in Oceanography, places where I was meeting some amazing and really cool people and making long-lasting friendships with people that I still have contact with that are also very passionate about the environment and making change within their communities. More recently, I've been involved in youth summits, creating projects like educating the public about fast fashion and topics that many youth don't really know about, but we play such a huge role in, especially now, online shopping. Um, so, so transitioning from my Monterey Bay Aquarium experiences, I've also, I'm also a second-year intern at the Watsonville Wetlands Watch in the internship offered called Climate Core Leadership Institute. And here, we primarily focus on the unplanting native species. So it's really cool to continue having a direct impact on my campus, in my city, and increase the tree shade canopy in our city.
That's amazing. That array of opportunities that you've taken advantage of sounds really fantastic. I know when we spoke, you said that you were feeling like there might have been a missing piece in the middle school program that you've been thinking about as a, now as a trustee and how you might fill that. Yeah, I'd like to turn to your role as a trustee, and, you know, when we chatted, you'd mentioned that there's so many competing pressures and responsibilities of board members. And that sometimes that makes it difficult for environmental literacy to be its own a topic on a board agenda. And you mentioned, for example, that your district has been conducting a search for a new superintendent, which has been taking quite a bit of time. You've been navigating new graduation requirements for the district, like ethnic studies and other important issues like budgeting and, you know, other considerations. So what reflections or advice do you have for trustees of other districts about how to make sure that environmental concerns are a part of the agenda?
Um, so I've, I've served on the, the district as a student trustee for a little bit now, and so far, I've experienced what we called the hot topics, quote unquote, the topics that come up and are very important. But I'd like to say that as a first-generation student, I want to emphasize that we make sure that all students have opportunities for environmental education. And so the support on campus and organizations and partnerships make all the difference in navigating areas. Because students can't value something that they don't know about. And so it's these opportunities that give us that knowledge, and so we can value in this. There's so much research supporting what I'm about to say right now. We know that it connects to students emotional, like socio-emotional, and like personal success and also academic success because it also creates like a network of support because you care about something, you have people supporting you, you have somewhere to go. And so when we talk about environmental initiatives in districts, it's important to remember that this is social justice and, of course, student success socially and academic, but it comes down to the empowerment of students. So that's what I really wanted to emphasize.
Trustee Romero Maya, thank you so much for, for joining us today. I'm so excited about what you've already achieved and contributed to your community, and I can't wait to see what you do next to continue to make the world a better place. Audience, if you have questions or comments for trustee Romero Maya, please do add those to the chat. And then, you know, kind of rounding out this portion of our agenda, we're going to turn to Seaberry Nakbar. She's a trustee for the Carmel Unified School District. And trustee Nakbar, we do have a couple of minutes, so you will have a chance to share about your district. But I'm hoping you can share a little bit about why this topic is important to you personally, share some of the successes and challenges you've encountered in moving this work forward, and then kind of as a member of the District Innovation Hub, share any reflections you have kind of on the, the two other trustees and the role of boards in general.
Well, I have to say, hello, everyone. Seaberry Nakbar, I work for NOAA, but I actually, I have dual hats where I also serve on my local school district as a board member. I'm in my third year now and will end my term in November. And I have to say, to see Ruby come full circle, Ruby was a part of Calabasas Green Team, which is part of the NOAA Ocean Guardian School Program, which is one of the programs that I manage. And to see her success and her passion and commitment to continue to move forward is just mind-blowing for me right now. So I'm in, I'm in heaven right now because you very rarely get to make that full-circle connection. So Ruby, thank you so much for joining us and making the time. Yeah, I, I have been doing environmental literacy, environmental education for 23 years plus, 23 of those at NOAA, and have been managing environmental education programs both locally, regionally, and nationally. And so my passion and my commitment was already there. And when an opportunity came up to run for my local school board, I thought, fantastic, this is the way that I can really make some good inroads. Because I had a very good partnership already with Carmel Unified School District, but I thought this is, this would be a great opportunity to strengthen those partnerships, to highlight environmental literacy even more. But unfortunately, my timing was a little off because I got elected to the school board in the middle of COVID. And unbeknownst to me, that really threw a monkey wrench in many of the efforts that we had. I had been doing with my NOAA hat in terms of promoting environmental ocean literacy at Carmel Unified School District. And so I had to pivot quickly and figure out different ways to engage remotely, first of all, and then kind of react to some of the pressures that were put on the school district after COVID. And I have a couple photos just to the right there in the slide. So after COVID, a lot of the structure that we put into place, that the district had put into place was gone, and that included reusable trays. And so after COVID, they started using single-use trays that were styrofoam, which just killed me. And then the new requirements with the free and reduced lunch, which are wonderful, but it requires certain procedures, and every student has to take an item, and much of those food items are wasted. And so I don't have the golden ticket for how we've moved beyond that, but I, I do know a couple things that I've learned through my three years. And I think Ruby touched on a lot of that, is that it's incredibly important to have the bottom-up approach. You're not going to get anywhere unless you have student voice represented strongly and students advocating for this. I really believe that this is the, this is what empowers change, is the student voice. You also obviously need to have teacher support. And then, of course, there's a whole range of other district employees that need to be supportive, too. And I'm talking about your chief business officer, your nutrition officer, your, your curriculum development head, you know, instructional coaches, as many different players as you can get on your team to promote and advocate for environmental literacy, the better. And so that's what I've been doing now is kind of casting my net further to try to encourage these good, strong partnerships to ensure sustainability, first of all, but also to promote the idea of why environmental literacy is not just a. promote the idea of why environmental literacy is not just a nice to have, it's a need to have. And in my 23 years of doing this just with NOAA, um, the one issue that I think is going to be percol- percolating up more and more uh is this idea of eco anxiety and um eco fatigue. I think students are overwhelmed to the point where they don't know how to take action and to have power and control over what's happening. And that's why I think eco literacy, sustainability, um, efforts on school grounds where you're actually seeing changes happen are the way to really empower students to feel like they have more control over what is happening. So that's the reason I, yeah, go ahead.
Thank, thank you so much for, for sharing those perspectives. I am super mindful of time. I'm so sorry to cut you off.
Absolutely.
Um, uh, thank you for those perspectives and I know you did a lot to advocate that we have a session like this focusing on board leadership and I'm so grateful for your leadership in this space. Please uh throw comments or questions for Seaberry about Carmel or about NOAA uh into the chat. Um, so now we're going to turn our attention to kind of a lightning round um of two toolkits that can help board members advance environmental sustainability and environmental literacy uh in their districts. School board members are uh local parents, they're community members, and many of these people bring a strong concern for the environment to their leadership, but they may be seeking support or resources on how to effectively achieve their goals. So thankfully, we're joined by our next two presenters who've done a ton of work to help make this a bit easier. Uh, we're joined by Andrea Yagoyan, the Chief Innovation Officer for Ten Strands and Stephanie Sidmon, uh, the Program Director for Undaunted K-12. Welcome to you both. Um, while Tim gets that uh slide deck back uh on screen, we're going to turn to Andra. And Andra, we'd love to start with you and hear about some mild, medium and spicy options in a board policy toolkit that you've developed. Can you please share what you've learned about the role of school boards and the guidance you've assembled to help them make policy decisions?
Yeah, thanks. Well, I'm super excited to be here and it's been so great already to hear from some of the speakers. Um, I'll just share, and I'm, I'm sharing my screen right now real quick just cause to navigate some of this, but um I will share that I really didn't have a gra- a strong grasp of school boards until um, until doing some work at the county level. And then I, I also supported the launch of this statewide program that was directly about providing resources for grassroots school board policy campaigns that are in, that are involving students or led by students. And so in the work that we did in a program that I'll share about a little bit later, we ended up de- developing this resource catalog that is available for other people to use. And I have to thank Seaberry and many others for their amazing contributions to this. So in general, this resource catalog that um I'm going to click on is in the notes here and if somebody could put it in the chat box, that's awesome. But basically this resource catalog has all these different resources that um somebody could use to, to better move this work forward in their area. And one of the key things I wanted to just note here is that for this resource guide that we put together, it has, it identifies different policy actions that grassroots leaders can influence. So it's got all, it's got resources for influencing resolutions, um, resources for influencing board policies, and then resources for influencing administrative regulations. And I had to go on my own learning journey just to basically understand that those are all very different and they all have very different outcomes. Um, and so in the process of putting this resource guide together, we also put together a decision tree, which you'll find is embedded in the, in the resource guide that can help grassroots leaders think through like, alright, is there a resolution? If not, that's where I'm going to start. If there is, let me look at the resolution and see if it has the goals I want. Is there a board policy? If yes, great, let me look at it. And so it kind of just takes you through that process of, of filtering through it. Now, because we developed this resource catalog for the whole state, we recognized that it was really important to have mild, medium and spicy language. And so that, the idea behind that is that you might be in a context where you have to have language that um is mu- mu- much more of a mild commitment, because there might be some really strong uh pushback if you came out, out the gate way too strong saying like, we are going to take climate action and we're going to do it, you know, tomorrow, right? There might be like people who are like, whoa, slow that down. Like, yes, we're going to accept that climate change is real, but on a 10-year timeline, right? So that's like more the mild, medium and somewhere in between. And then spicy is like, we're ready to go now and we're going to do it as fast as possible. So in the, in the resource catalog, you'll see, and I'm just going to scroll down to it, sorry, I'm like struggling here to pull this all up. But in the resource catalog, um, I'm going to scroll down to the resources that I am here to really share about the most, which is um, there are templates, um, there are templates here that you could actually click on and would help you actually develop your own resolution. And within these templates, there's all these menus, these language menus of like clauses that you can select from. And within these, there's mild, medium and spicy versions. So the idea is that we don't want people to have to like completely restart from scratch, but instead go ahead and, and build off of what is already there and already happening in many different communities. Um, and there's also that same thing for board policies. So there is in this re- resource, there is board policy, um, there is language here where if you wanted to pass one of these already templated board policies, like um if you're really interested in getting like more green school operations at your school district, you can take that template and then you can customize it with any sort of language that you think is right for your school district. So you'll see it has like a statement here and then it says, how could you make that statement more medium or more spicy depending on your context? So those are just some of the resources that I've developed. They're available for everybody to use however they want, and that's it for me.
Thanks so much, Andra.
Andra, thanks for, for sharing that. We're gonna uh, I imagine there might be questions in the chat, throw those in. There's links in the chat to access those resources. Um, incredible resource. And now we're going to turn to Stephanie from Undaunted K-12, which recognizes the incredible power and also the environmental impacts of America's K-12 public education system. Stephanie and her team have been creating uh toolkits and playbooks for districts to enact policy, to access federal infrastructure money and make smart climate investments. Welcome, Stephanie. I know you've got a lot to share in a short time to lightning round through it, so uh looking forward to hearing uh and having you have the opportunity to share about Undaunted K-12's resources and the incredible work you've been doing.
I will speed through it, Nate, I promise. Um, thanks so much for having me. It's so great to be here and to see lots of familiar faces. Um, I will speed through this. We created in November, or in December, we launched a school board member climate action toolkit, because we recognize the importance of every education leader being able to see that rapidly changing climate threatens their core mission and that there's so much that school board members can do, as we already heard about tonight. Um, there's so much that you can do, but sometimes it's just a matter of like getting the resources into um folks' hands. So um, we released a toolkit, I just put it in the chat. Um, feel free to uh take a look at it as I kind of walk through it very quickly, Nate. Um, next slide, please. So inside this toolkit, you will find um lots of different resources, including nine commitments that you can make as a school board member, um, a template for a climate action resolution, so kind of similar to some of the resources that Andrew shared, a case study on Dallas, Texas, and how they dealt with indoor air quality, um, and some really cool moves that their school board did. Um, important moments for school board members to act on climate. Um, and then some different resources around climate mitigation, um, climate adaptation and resilience, climate education, and how to approach all of this with an equity lens. Um, and then finally, we end with some federal funding opportunities available to schools. And um, less relevant in California, although of course, still very relevant, is how to address um pushback and inaccuracies, um, which school board members field all the time and we want to make sure that they're equipped um with how to navigate that. Next slide. Oh, here are the nine commitments. We can do next slide on this, we can breeze through. So next slide, here's um the sample template resolution. Next slide, please. Um, here are some of the important moments for when school board members should and can really be thinking about um centering climate justice and uh, and climate action. So I'm thinking about like messaging for campaigns, thinking about uh what are some moves that you can do while your district is preparing a facilities and building um master plan process or uh whether there's a committee to join, um, thinking about climate action and movement when, when setting and approving budgets, um, how to think about hiring senior staff and superintendents. Um, so again, just a plethora of resources for board members to consider. Thank you. And again, some, some uh ideas, key points and examples around mitigation, adaptation, resilience, education and equity. And addressing pushback, which we already talked about. So let me just send, um, I know I already sent the uh full resources in the chat, but just one last thing, if you advance two more slides. Thank you so much. So in addition to this uh school board member climate action toolkit, um, we also have lots of other resources that are pertinent to school board members and district leaders, including how to leverage federal funding from the Inflation Reduction Act. Um, we have a whole solution center with resources for district leaders, um, and some policy advocacy through the Climate Ready Schools Coalition that we backbone with the support of Andra and Ten Strands. Um, so I just dropped links to all of those things in the chat, um, and I'll be sticking around for the Q and A portion, so feel free to reach out if you've got questions.
Great. Stephanie, thank you. So well done, as is everything that Undaunted K-12 does. Um, I really hope that everybody takes the time to visit the Undaunted K-12 website and to access uh and use these important tools. They are incredibly well done, they are incredibly thorough, incredibly thoughtful and very user friendly. So if you have comments or questions for Stephanie, please add them in the chat. Um, and Stephanie, thank you so much for your leadership on this uh topic in this area in California and across the country. Um, just uh amazing and excellent work and I'm so glad you're able to share a window and you know, the tip of the iceberg of, of all that you guys do with us today. Okay, great. So um to close out uh the presentation and kind of discussion part of our webinar today, um, we're going to turn to the topic of school board advocacy and interaction. So how can students and parents and teachers and community members build these relationships with school boards and work with them to enact positive environmental change? To help us dig into this question, we're going to be once again joined by Andrea Yohogan, um, who in addition to her role as the Chief Innovation Officer for Ten Strands is the co-founder, is that a fair statement, Andra, of the California Youth Climate Policy uh Program or the CYCP Fellowship? Uh, we'll also hear from Sean Viegas, a senior at Merced Scholars and a CYCP Fellow. We'll hear from Martha Kane, a retired teacher from Berkeley Unified School District, who also served as a CYCP mentor, um, and has enacted uh quite a bit of leadership and change in her district since retiring. And then we'll close out with Sean McFetrich, who's the superintendent from Cabrillo Unified School District. Sean is also a member of the Cali District Innovation Hub and was one of the key advocates and organizers for today's topic, highlighting the importance of the kind of grassroots and treetop leadership discussion. Um, so let's turn to Andra. Andra, please uh tell us a little bit about the California Youth Climate Policy Program.
Yeah, just so to give a little context to Sean and Martha, who are going to share um about, you know, some experiences relevant to this program. We, this year with Sierra Club, Undaunted and Ten Strands, we launched um a program called the California Youth Climate Policy Leadership Program, which was a knowledge to action program that supported students who wanted to go through the process of leading a, a uh campaign directed towards their school boards to try to get school board policy actions passed. So if you go to the next slide, I'll just share that um we had students from all over the state, um, representing these, these specific counties, so 16 of the 58 counties. Um, and a lot of our most, almost, almost the entire cohort was made up of uh public school students, but because it was a pilot, we, we threw in a couple private school students to see how they fared as well. Um, so if you go to the next slide, just, just to, to tee up Sean and Martha here to talk about some of the things that they're going to talk about, this was, this program was fast paced. It started in the summer and with a, with a kickoff retreat, and then we took students um all the way through with monthly workshops. And the whole time, we were helping them design what it looks like to design a coalition campaign, where they had to like build out a coalition and then what it looks like to pitch their ideas to decision makers. So I'm going to turn it over to Sean and Martha just to share um their own journeys and um, yeah, thanks, thanks folks.
Great, thanks, Andra. Um, you know, if there's any information about upcoming opportunities for CYCP, please do share those in the chat. Sean, welcome. I see that you're online. I know that you had some commitments this afternoon and were rushing to get in, so if you want to join us on camera um and on mute, that'd be fantastic. Um, Sean is one of the CYCP fellows. Recently, Sean helped to organize a policy update to the Merced Union High School District's Integrated Waste Management Policy. And on January 10th of this year, the board passed unanimously the updated policy recommendations. So congratulations, Sean. Um, Sean, can you tell us a little bit about why you were interested in joining CYCP?
Yeah, sure. Uh, thank you for your congratulations. Bear with me, I did get my uh wisdom teeth removed Monday, so I, I'm a little slow to talk, but passing this was important to uh schools and students, and especially for me, because environmental literacy is important and the school, like such as, I mean, I'm a part of junior ambassadors at Yosemite High School. And being in a continuation high school, life can throw its curveballs. So what gave me a positive influence was participating in CYCP uh for environmental initiatives that really go for the greater good. So when I got it passed, I was really happy. I partnered with uh somebody from MU HSD. I am from actually a charter school, so it was really great that there was flexibility in the program too. So um, the club that I primarily am involved with is in the public district. So it was really nice to get involved and we had about uh 500 students uh roughly give a, their support in an anonymous uh Google form, and it was great to also get the student voice up on there too. Uh, Director of Sustainability and Adaptation from uh Modesto City Schools, Gilbert uh Rosas also gave us a letter of support. And it was really amazing just to see everybody come together and, and move it forward. Uh, this month, we, we did get past this month and we are just waiting on the CSBA policy writer to get back to us and um, yeah.
Uh, it's so fantastic. You know, a little bit about this policy, I understand that the old policy was a little stale. It was, you know, uh, over a decade old and a lot had changed in the waste management field and especially in the need to help students learn about this. Can you say a little bit about some of the policy recommendations you made in this change?
Of course. So as you were saying, the, the main policy, it didn't really address uh future years, like the way that the climate will adapt. So we need to have rules in place that are flexible. And it also needed opportunities to enhance its approach for improving student engagement. And so in the adaptive policy that me and my partner wrote, we made sure that in the policy, like it specifically states that there be a a prioritization of sustainable initiatives with responsibility. And also it's a comprehensive waste management program with annual reviews, just to ensure that like this is actually going good. Focusing on educating students about the environmental stewardship is also in there. And lastly, one of the really big parts about this is encouraging partnerships for more resources to allow like for external funding to support uh waste reduction in the district.
Great. And then let's uh close out with any advice you have to other students about how to advocate for change and to work with a school board. I'm sure it was quite a learning journey. I'm sure there were a whole bunch of things you'd never done before that you had to do as part of this. And what were some key insights you gained about uh how students can um promote change working with a school board?
Uh, very quickly, I think that uh going in respectfully and being persistent is important because sometimes, you know, people can get busy and uh you need, you just need to keep putting your foot through the door. And also just not to step on anyone's shoes, so give credit where credit is due. For example, MU HSD, 90% of their electricity comes from solar panels. So going in with that knowledge, you, we already know that they recognize that sustainability and green energy is something that they need to prioritize. So thanking them for that and also giving room for, hey, we know you guys already addressed these uh green initiatives. Is there anything that we didn't mention?
Great. Sean, thank you so much for joining us. Uh, audience, if you have questions for Sean or comments, please throw them in the chat. Um, Amy, if you could share, you know, the links that are on that slide include a direct Amy, if you could share, you know, the links that are on that slide include a direct link to the board agenda where you can see the policy that was enacted with the the changes. And you can also get a link to Sean's story as a CYPC fellow. Sean, even with your wisdom teeth out, you still had so much wisdom to share today and we're very thankful that you were able to join us. Tim, let's go to the next slide and we're going to turn to Martha Kane. Martha, my, have you been busy in retirement? Could you please share a little bit about what you've been working on and what you've learned about the role of retired teachers and others can play when they leverage their specialized knowledge of how districts work? And or how to lean on those relationships that they've built in the school community?
Okay, I'm going to give a quick five minute tour. In June of 2018, I'm 2018, I retired from teaching middle school in Berkeley and was motivated soon thereafter to become a climate activist. Because I wanted future generations to have the challenge, I mean, the chance to live in balance with nature and experience something resembling the natural world that I've had the privilege of enjoying for almost 70 years. And so focusing my activism in the education arena was a natural fit for me. Berkeley Unified School District is a small district where I have a reputation. I know teachers, administrators and families. And as a former teacher, I'm a strong advocate for paying teachers to collaborate around how to incorporate climate literacy into the curriculum. Embedding it in the curriculum will give our society a lot of bang for its buck. Because it means cultivating sustainable practices in our students while at the same time arming them with the knowledge they'll need to cope with the challenges of climate change. Because let's face it, before we know it, the kindergartners of today are going to be the citizens of tomorrow. So in this first slide here, there's a story about how I know the president of the school board, Laura Babbitt, but no time to tell it. She's in the rear of the photograph on the left there. In the summer of 2021, Laura put me in touch with a BUSD parent working with the Sierra Club to promote climate literacy. That's Sarah Rainey there on the right. Some of you know her. And Berkeley High School sophomore Ella Suring on the left, who were working together on a climate literacy resolution. So Laura, who has a background in finance, took the draft of the resolution to the superintendent and worked closely with the associate superintendent to amend the resolution and attach a budget to it. And meanwhile, Sarah, Ella, myself and teachers Ella McClure, who's on this call, Jackie Almania, Erin Fowler and others worked with staff, students, BUSD parents, community partners to gather letters of support and prepare student speakers for the school board meeting. Where in November of 2021, Laura introduced the resolution and it was passed with $65,000 attached to it, which was about a third of the 210,000 that we were asking for. Well, passing the resolution was one thing, but moving it forward was quite another matter. After distributing a survey which indicated teacher interest in climate literacy and a change of superintendent and a change of associate superintendent. And after a reduction of the funding from 65,000 to about 40,000, nine months later, we finally had our first meeting with 30 teachers who were paid hourly curriculum rate for a half day workshop in August of 2022. And if you could project slide two, please, or the next slide, I should say. Throughout the 2022, 23 school year, we had monthly meetings at the elementary, middle and high school levels. And we used spring showcases in April that were close to Earth Day as an effective way to share climate literacy efforts that were happening around the district with the Berkeley community. And so you see here in this slide, the first annual BUSD Climate Fair took place on Earth Day. We had over 350 people participate and you can see some of the ways that they were participating with bike repair and the bike smoothie and inoculating fungi and investigating compost bugs. Could I have the next slide? At the elementary level, there were marches, skits and climate resilient science projects. And at Berkeley High School, there was a day of activities right before Earth Day, which also included climate resilient science project and art projects. And you see here, this is still the the fair that we had where student work was displayed. If I could have the next slide. Pictured in this slide, you see a fall and spring youth community organizing workshop as well as presentations by multilingual students presenting about the impact of climate change in their countries of origin. And then there were six proposals by high school students at Berkeley High proposing projects the district could undertake to put more sustainable practices in place. In addition to the showcases all last spring, I lobbied with other members of the Climate Literacy Working Group doggedly for the school district to create a position for teacher on special assignment. And finally, last summer, they funded an 80% position and hired Ellen McClure, who's on this call. And I'll end there, but I'm happy to answer any questions later if people are interested.
Martha, thank you so much. There is such power in being an outsider with insider knowledge and relationships. And it's truly remarkable how you've leveraged that knowledge and that power to affect change, to affect policy, to impact budgets, to organize students and make these opportunities available to to kids throughout your district. So thank you so much. So closing us out today is Sean McFetridge. He's the superintendent of Cabrillo Unified School District. Superintendent Fettridge was one of the key advocates for creating today's webinar and looking at the importance of leadership from the top in partnership with advocacy from the grassroots. Sean, as superintendent, you are often in the position of navigating between the treetops of the board and the grassroots of the community. Could you please share your reflections on what we've heard today and your own thoughts on this topic?
Well, I mean, it's just so inspiring, number one, to hear from board members and to hear from leaders who are elected officials. And also to hear from student Sean and teacher Martha in particular. At the end of the day, this is a collective action problem. We know what we need to do. We just need an army of people doing it. Sorry to use the military analogy. We need a large collective of people doing it. In Cabrillo Unified, we harness the energy of students. The board hired me. They knew I'd done some of this work in Alameda. That work in Alameda was led by students and by teachers just like Martha was discussing. And then we just amplified it and worked on it to get it to policy, to get it in front of the board. So to a certain extent, I think about this as amplifying and evangelizing the work. And I will say that I think once the board gets an idea of that and this board, once they knew I'd done this work, they said, well, we had some students come a couple of years ago asking about this. We started to document what we were doing in the district. We presented on that and then we asked the board within six months of my hire to create a committee that they could sit on. And then you had a board member sitting on a committee with teachers, community members and students at the high school. We basically co-opted the Environmental Sustainability Committee that was running out of the AP Environmental Science Class at the high school. So you start where you are and then you build on those efforts and then you just advocate from all these different levels. We now have tri bin waste diversion on all our campuses because the high school said that was their goal. We helped them do that. And then we piloted and did it on all our campuses. Same with water reclamation and water barrels. Solar was something that came from us. Because I said, hey, this is triple bottom line. It's good for the people. It's good for the planet and it's good for the prosperity. We will save money on utilities and that money can go to teacher and other employee salaries. So I guess for me, I hate the top down, bottom up. This is grassroots, I think is the better way to put it. We need to harness the energy and amplify the movement however we can, whether that's the boardroom, the classroom or with community partners. And for us, that really was to get that power and to make sure that everybody was on the same page was having the board in January adopt an environmental sustainability committee that two of them could sit on and hear from students and teachers. And then that would pressure me and other staff to do the right thing. I'll stop there.
Superintendent McFetridge, thank you so much. For those who don't know, Cabrillo Unified School District serves the Half Moon Bay community and Sean, you and I have talked about this, that, you know, it's it's one or two floods away from that community being totally isolated out on the coast, cut off from resources. And as we've been seeing the impact of accelerating climate change and fires and floods, these investments in solar and rainwater capture and growing your own food and local agriculture provide both important educational opportunities, but strengthen the resilient fiber of the school district and its ability to be an important resource beyond education for the community. So I really appreciate your leadership in connecting the goals of the students with the education and organization of your board to achieve these important outcomes. So thank you so much. Great. Let's move to the next slide. You know, we're we're at an hour and we like to try to keep the main content within an hour. And I'm glad that we were close to that today, but we do schedule an hour and a half so that we have some time to close and reflect. I often think of webinars like this as a river of information that's flowing by and you're kind of watching this river and hearing all of these things and it's, you know, moving past you. But I think it's really important to take a moment of reflection to take those aspects from the river and put them in your reservoir. So I encourage you to just take a minute and think about the different presenters you've heard from today. The different resources that were shared, the different motivations that people expressed. And what is it that you want to put in your reservoir? What is it that you want to hold on to? What are some ideas of some actionable steps that you might take within your sphere of influence? Think about the questions you have and or the support you might need to move efforts forward in your community. I'll pause for a moment so you can can think about those. And if anybody wants to share an important moment, a commitment, a reflection or a question in the chat, I invite you to do that now. Tim, if we could move to the next slide as people are kind of thinking about that. To close this out, we have a couple of just kind of business items. Amy has put a feedback link in the chat. So Tim, if you could go to the next slide. Your feedback is really important and helps us, you know, put together topics that are important and relevant and useful to you. So please take a look at that. Feedback. It also helps us organize these sessions in a way that hopefully meets your needs. Next slide. This is the kickoff of our 2024 webinar series. Next month, we are going to focus on the, some recommendations on how to implement AB285, which calls for climate literacy in K-12 science education in California. So the the County Office of Education Innovation Hub has been putting together some recommendations and guidance for schools, districts and science teachers. We will share that guidance and recommendation and other ideas about climate literacy in that session. You can see the other topics scheduled for this spring as well. Next slide. Amy, I'm going to let you speak to this. We are trying to learn all we can about the landscape in California and Amy, can you say a little bit about this survey and study and encourage people to complete it?
Well, simply put, we're trying to hear from educators who work with the boots on the ground. I'm not sure if that's military or not on school sites. So teachers, administrators, expanded learning folks and the deadline is this Sunday at midnight for real. We're going to close it. So if you know anyone who's working at school sites, this is their chance to explain to you what they're already doing that is, or to explain to us to put out into the world. What is awesome that they're already doing, but also what their needs are. And then this could definitely be something that anyone interested in working with the school board can use this data to help show the lay of the land and how, you know, districts in your area are comparing with what's going on in different parts of the state. So we'd really appreciate your help in sharing that survey.
This survey data is really important to helping us understand where we are at as a state, where some of our gaps are, where the interest is. I know Amy has been working tirelessly to get these surveys turned in and I, and congratulations, Amy. I hear we have surveys from every county in the state of California. But please make sure if you're on this call that you share this opportunity with people in your community so that their voices can be heard as well. Next slide. Amy, back to you again to tell us a little about the community partner portal.
Yeah, in brief, we just want to get the word out that this resource exists. So this is a free resource that a community based partner organizations can get the word out about what they offer and educators and school board members and students can search by their region to find out who in your area might be a great partner for supporting environmental literacy and sustainability in your region. So if you're not on it, just go ahead and check it out. And there's a way that you can sign up for it as well. So hopefully we spread the word.
As Sean mentioned and as Ruby highlighted, these partnerships between schools and community partners are so essential in making a strong fabric and that Community Partner Portal is a place where you can connect with others to move this forward. We do like to kind of wrap up these sessions with an opportunity for people to chat, for people to connect, for people to get into some smaller conversations. So you may have a question that you've been dying to ask to one of our presenters if they're still on the call. And we'd like to make that opportunity available and also to maybe connect with some people around a topic of interest. So we're offering three breakout rooms today. Breakout room number one, I'm calling Ask a Board Member and I'm hoping trustee Nakbar, if you're able to be in that room. So if people have questions about, you know, what's it like to be on a board or how do people do this or what's going on when this happens at a board meeting or, you know, what do you guys really do? I'd like to make sure that opportunity is available. So, you know, if you're nervous about asking your own trustees what they do and how they work, you can ask a trustee from another district. Stephanie, thank you so much for your willingness to stay on and speak more and answer questions and point out more resources and policy tools and ideas. We'll have a room open for people to learn more about that. And then a lot of people, you know, we shared a lot of stories about community members advocating, organizing. So if you'd like to talk more about that, if you'd like to share stories about your own efforts to move things forward, if you'd like to connect with people who've had some success in that area, we'll offer a breakout room there as well. Of course, we know you're all busy people. So if you do need to drop off the call, that's fine as well. Thank you so much for joining us today. Amy has opened the breakout rooms. We'll keep them open until 5:30, but we will close up at 5:30. So, you know, if it's getting close to 5:30, you want to keep the conversation going, exchange contact information with the the people you'd like to be connected with. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate you and we look forward to seeing you next month. And if anyone needs help getting into a breakout